Do you want to read?
Andrea, she would like you to read that.
Although I would prefer to see the ever seen or ever locked roofing profiles, I understand from the homeowner that the ever last two profile matches the roof on the accessory structure.
Okay, so I second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we have motion on the floor.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Good luck. Hope it works out well.
Oh, yes. Now I've got to contact vendors and find out that I've got the materials and then my day labor I've got to find when they have opened.
Oh, yours is going to help.
She's going to dictate.
Okay.
And she's going to okay the check.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
See you. Absolute. Thank you.
Enjoy the week.
Okay, you too.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Next is proposal for cable park at Longwood Park. Would you gentlemen like to come forward please? Andrea, could you read Brian's comments?
Yes. I have reviewed a very conceptual aerial photograph that illustrates a cable park being proposed in Longwood Park on the south side of Route 82. The conceptual drawing also indicates associated off-street parking proposed adjacent to the cable park. Based on the extremely conceptual nature of the plan, I don't have nearly enough information to provide an adequate review to the commission. In general, the concept of a cable park on recreation property seems reasonable and once details are made available, I can provide a complete report.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any questions, comments from the commission?
I do. Well, let's start up with, well, Brian's memo. It says, "I don't have nearly enough information to provide an adequate review to the commission," which I took some notes myself and with what we received here.
Excuse me. Can I interrupt? That's not Brian's memo. Brian's memo says, "I have reviewed a very conceptual aerial photograph that illustrates a cable park being proposed in Longwood Park on the south side of Route 82. The conceptual drawing also indicates associated off-street parking proposed adjacent to the cable park. Based on the extremely conceptual nature of the plan, I don't have nearly enough information to provide an adequate review to the commission. In general, the concept of the cable park on recreation property seems reasonable and once details are made available, I can provide a complete report." If you have any questions, need any additional information, please feel free to contact me. Now, what are your notes?
No, I mean, no, I know she read that, but I wrote, I just underlined that part because that's kind of what my notes, after getting my packet, I put, "The document contains insufficient detail to be considered a legitimate plan of development for planning commission consideration, conceptual or otherwise. The planning commission cannot consider this proposal at this time." These are my notes, okay, as below stated for the reasons. One, the planning commission requires a site plan. The drawing provided is not sufficient site plan per 1137.05. Two, the planning commission requires a landscape and signage plan. No such plans or documents have been submitted. Three, the planning commission is unable to consider, A, a location of the building, parking areas, or other few features with respect of the Latin existing nature of features such as trees and large streams. Three, efficiency adequacy of safety of a proposal layout of internal streets and driveways, the location of green areas provided. C, inadequacy of location landscaping and screening of the parking lot. And D, the development of the plan's compliance with the city architect design standards in chapter 1172. I could go on and it kind of breaks them all down, which I think you can read prior.
Right. The thing is, they're not here for that. They're here to find out if the, if the planning commission of the city of Macedonia thinks that this is a good idea, a conceptual idea, just a plan in their head. Don't even look at the drawing. There's no, don't even look. It's a, it's a concept they are putting in front of this board.
Just to go back in history, this year, third time before planning commission. And twice before conceptual, the planning commission gave you, okay, it's, conceptually, the idea is possible.
So I take it that you've heard differently somewhere that this might not.
This was what?
Right, Eric, you being in commission.
I know, I know.
The first time we came, we had a plan. The manor house committee got an extension. So we went back to the drawing board. We went to the north side.
Right.
Came back to you guys, got conceptual approval. Then, once we moved it to the north side, we heard and talked to numerous residents on Elizabeth Lane, listened to their, their concerns. So, myself and Eric and the people we were working with, went back to the table again and tried to accommodate the residents of the community. So we came back with the plan back on the south side, not interfering the manor house. The plan that we've given in front of you. We have added a parking lot that we feel the manor house committee would benefit out of. We put handicap parking in it. We actually added a driveway that we thought would be rather unique, accommodating the manor house committee with the way Mayor Long came in and out of his property. We felt it would be pretty unique to have a driveway coming in from his pillars when you're coming east on 82. Make that a one-way in. And then the second drive would be a one-way out, so all traffic would exit out onto the main drive of Longwood Park. So we've, we've just really tried to take into consideration everybody, the manor house committee. You know, we know they're struggling with funds and we figured this would be sort of a unique way to sort of help them out, benefit them. And we truly think that, you know, maybe someone would come to the manor house, look at the manor house and go, wow, what is this concept? Maybe they come and check out what we have going on. Maybe they have a grandkid or a son or a daughter that might be interested in, you know, weight boarding, knee boarding, or water skiing. And with this plan, we've included a beach that was asked of us.
Is she off?
Yep. If you look at the plan, on the southwest side of the main lake is another piece of water that gives you 700 feet, 700 feet long. The yellow part is the beach, it's approximately 50 feet wide. So it would give the community the ability to come to a beach with a swim area, that would be buoyed off. And then on the backside, that is where we would have, it's called our two door system, it's a single cable, where children that had never ridden before would come and learn how to ride on a very low-impact situation. If, if they start to fall or lose their balance, you just shut off the dial and it sets them down in the water. So we've tried to accommodate.
We don't want to suck kids down into the water.
No, no, no. It's, it's very low impact when it comes to, to learning, but you know, we've tried to take everybody into consideration. We know that the manor house has, you know, a lot of history behind in the city. And we didn't want to impact anything with the manor house. And we didn't want to upset any residents on the north side of Elizabeth Lane. So we went back to the drawing board and had worked very hard to come up with a plan that we think benefits the city of Macedonia. We would like to be given conceptual approval to move forward, to come forward with plans that would have to be reviewed by planning commission. You know, environmental assessment plans, full engineering plans on the lake, design, everything. We truly think it's a benefit. And that's why we're, we're pushing hard to have it built here. We've talked to people that are for it. Like I said, the residents on Elizabeth Lane basically told us, we like it, do it on the south side. So that's when we really, really came back. And with the pavilions on the south side and with Angela, she runs a very large summer camp with the youth in the summertime. You know, she's already expressed great excitement about this plan and having all the children that she runs through her youth program have the eligibility for them to go through possibly a three-day weight or knee board or water skiing camp. We've got a lot of benefit. You know, we have a huge casino team built in Northfield that they're really marketing, the entertainment part of it. You know, the traffic that goes across 82, approximately 13,000 cars a day travel east to west that go past Longwood Park.
Tell me about it.
You know, we think it's, we think it's a good concept. We like the location. You know, people said to us, why don't you look at SeaWorld? Well, for SeaWorld, well, that's a huge lake. We don't want to be where SeaWorld is at. We feel this is unique to our community and we feel it had a huge impact. You know, we've even talked with the law director for the city. And we voiced our concern about contractual agreement that would have to be developed with the city, with council to approve. And we really expressed our concern and our interest that whatever that contractual agreement is, we'd like to see the money that the city would gain off of our venture to be used for improvements in Longwood Park. A lot of residents, a lot of people in our community have made comments about, what about walking trails in Longwood Park? Well, where's the money coming from? You know, I've heard a lot of talk just recently about possibly putting lighting up for the ball fields. Well, everything's got a price tag on it. I think this is a good venture and my partner Eric and the people that are going along with this venture think it's a great idea in our community. There's nothing like it. In the history of the cable parks that are built, anywhere from Florida all the way up to Canada to across the world, one cable park has gone out of business. And that was due to mismanaged run. And it wasn't open very long. And it was in Florida.
Well, concept, okay, concept, fantastic idea. They should have, we should have some type of outdoor water sports. We should have some type in the city, and that's fine. This is not a bad place to build something like this, conceptually. I personally, that's fine. As old and nasty as I am, I'd probably use it. The thing is, from what I'm hearing, okay, and that's not from the public, okay, from what I'm hearing from different people and emails I get and everything else is, they don't want it. Okay, the city doesn't, the city, I don't know about the people, the city, they're, they want to pass an ordinance that says this is detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Now, health-wise, this, to me, looks like a good thing. Healthy, this will keep you healthy.
Exactly.
Okay, especially little kids. Safety, you're going to have more safety people here than we've ever had there before. Okay? Welfare, I don't understand what the welfare means. The only thing you can do for this is benefit. I don't understand where you think the health, safety, and welfare is going to be gone with this, all right? But from what I understand, there, there are people that are trying to shoot this down. They don't want the city, I guess, to make a profit on any of their property or anything else. But conceptually, I'm all for it. Whether it comes down to us or not, in the total end, I don't know. I don't even know, does it have, we're done, let's say we all say, okay. Then does it have to go to council?
It will go to council, absolutely. But they're nowhere near at that now.
Right.
Right now, we're looking at these two lakes. And my comment is, we were always promising outdoor pool, never could have it. I don't see it in our near future. 700 feet, did you say a beach?
700 feet. This is, this is true scale. It's, that's 700 feet mark in that location.
Well, if it wouldn't have that, I think that I would have to think twice. But the fact that there's, would be outdoor facility for use for our residents, at what cost? What would be the cost?
That's what we would work out in our agreement, but, you know, definitely with, with the residents. We would, we'd love to find a way to work that in with Parks and Rec. So, city, city residents can use the facility, part of their, the pass that they have with the 57, something along that, that line.
You know, there's a good model that can be used. I have mentioned in the past in Pleasant Prairie, Wisconsin, Penosha, Wisconsin, power north to Chicago, ready to cross the line. That community has the most impressive complex I've ever seen in my life when it comes to recreation. And it's located on a very large lake. And on the opposite end of the lake, they have a very small swim area, outdoor swim area with a beach. And I've been there numerous times throughout the summer, as early as early June, as late as third week of August. And every time I've been there, in the sun's been shining, it's been full of people. And just from the little bit of information I got from people up there, if you're a member of that rec center, you have the ability to buy a pass that goes with your yearly rec center pass to use the beach and the swim facility outdoors. If you're a resident of that county, but you're not a member of the rec class, I think it costs you like $4 bucks. If you're a non-resident, which myself and my wife and my two boys were, I think it cost my wife $7 a day for my, my wife and my two boys to use. But that beach was very active. People were there, mothers were there with their kids playing in sand swimming. I witnessed triathlete teams utilizing the water in the morning to swim the train for triathletes. So I think this brings something very good to the community. We truly understand that the concern is the golf course on the north side. And we have said from day one, please don't view this like the golf course. This is a totally different venture.
This is proven, it's been around for 50, 60 years and not, not like golf hasn't. But, you know, these parks are, these parks are proven, they're all thriving.
That was a new concept.
Exactly. That's what, where this, Cincinnati is going on their fifth year. They're just building a new park in, and, and they just built a new park in Houston, Texas. So, you know, we know that they're thriving. Excited to bring it to the community.
You know, we just, we just had someone ask us a question last week. What about you guys having cross-country skis made available for a longer time? People wanted to rent cross-country skis, the cross-country ski on the backside of the park. I said, that's a great idea. It's promoting physical fitness for people, you know, to get out and about. I mean, you can't cross-country ski if Rainland, Boston Mills don't work. So, you know, it.
Not enough business.
So we, we think it's a good concept. We, we came back because it is on the south side again. We want everybody to be aware that we're, you know, we'd like to work with the manor house committee. So we, we'd like to move forward.
Well, I got to say, you guys have persistence. But you, you keep taking in and taking to heart the negativity and trying to deal with it. And I, I admire that. To me, that's exceptional because most people would just take an O and say, oh, well, so it goes. But you keep trying to make it work in every different way. So I, I commend you for that.
Have you ever, have you talked to any other council people, anybody other besides Angela or something like that?
I have spoken with a couple council people. And we wanted to come in front of council to make sure that every council person had the opportunity to see the new layout. We don't want to not include anybody. Quite frankly, I'd, I'd like to know what, why council's so negative about it.
Well, I'm sure everybody was.
Because I, I have had a few council people say, I've been contacted by numerous people that sit around for it. And my response back to them is, can you please give me their name and numbers? Give us the opportunity to sell the product. And we have not gotten one name, one number.
Well, Rock, as a council member, as a council member, a lot of people do call us anonymously and it would be wrong of us to actually give that person's name or number out. For me, myself, a lot of people have said that to me. I had a phone call just recently about something totally different. And I'm not going to, you know, say exactly who called me and how I found out about something. And, and I'll leave it at that. But have you ever gone to any other, like, there's all kinds of undeveloped land all over Nerdonia here. Have you gone to try to see about purchasing undeveloped land to put this adventure on?
We have pursued one other location. And the other location had a small pond. And it just couldn't be expanded to capabilities we wanted it to be.
So you're looking in this area?
But quite frankly, we, we, we talked with Brandywine at Boston Mills Ski Resort.
Right.
And the general manager was ecstatic, he was very, very excited. And they have a lake down there. But the location of that lake is basically landlocked because of the drive that comes in their snow tubing area. And we, we tried, we tried and worked with him to try to get it to the size it needed to be. And he couldn't make it work. But he, we expressed to him that we were going to move forward in pursuit of Macedonia. He was very excited and basically told us any way that they could be of help, to let them know.
It's a, it's a wonderful location. I mean, we, it's why we're so persistent. I mean, it's great off 82, we're, we're within 20 minutes of Boston Mills, Brandywine.
Right.
And, you know, so we, we know that we're going to draw from all of the people that are going to Boston Mills, Brandywine, to come here in the winter. And yeah, and several other parks that are under development right now, currently, in, in Atlanta, Georgia, in Oklahoma, one in Seattle. The park in Cincinnati, very similar, very similar setup. It's in a park with softball fields, soccer fields. So it's a crossover, you know, the kids that are going to play soccer, see this, want to come try it, vice versa. So, you know, that's why we're excited about Longwood Park.
As a councilperson, you asked the question about, my personal opinion, it's city-owned property. And it's maintained by the city. And I wasn't involved with the two club when all that went down. And I remember voting at some point for something, couldn't, can't quite, quite tell you, years ago, on the ballot. But, which maybe the mayor can let, do you know if that went on the ballot for the two club?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. I remember, yeah, I remember voting on, I think it was the rec, the rec center. In this community, I'm still waiting on phase two, to go back to the voters for phase two, to have a built-in swimming pool off the back of the indoor swimming pool that we put in. That's what I would like to see. And I know my, you know, that's, that's what I would like to see, not a lake.
This has nothing to do with swimming pools.
I understand that, I understand that.
And this, and I believe that there would be an agreement that the law director for the city would have to develop that would have to be approved by not only Eric and I, but our attorney that represents us, that would have to be approved by everybody in the council. And, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know a whole bunch about the golf course, but I believe there is some type of financial agreement that they are obligated to the city. So I don't think the land was given to them.
No, it's.
I believe they are supposed to pay taxes, just like any other business in the city.
But they didn't. We're still, we have to end up getting stuck with all that tax. I think it's being looked at right now because they didn't pay tax. They didn't, they weren't paying anything. And I wasn't on council.
We shouldn't be viewed as a golf course.
Right.
It's a totally different venture and we would like the opportunity. And quite frankly, we would like the opportunity for the law director to develop a contractual agreement, possibly for council to take a look at. And we are very open to meet with council and get their input. Mr. Molenar, I had a conversation with him Saturday morning. He addressed several questions to myself. And I told him I would answer those questions so he can make a decision.
What happened to our special meeting we were all supposed to have with council and the public?
I don't think it set up.
You know, that's, that's, when I got this this week, I was kind of like really upset over this because, one, I thought we were going to have a special meeting before we came back here. And now that didn't happen. And so now here we are. But can I ask you a question? Are you an employee of Macedonia, Ohio?
I don't know if that really is on the table here. We're talking conceptual.
I know.
Kevin, do you have any input?
I really like the lake part. I think the beach part, I think that's 700, 700 feet, that's huge. That's, that's something that, I don't know, my kids would be over there all the time, all the time. I think it's a huge benefit plus, I think that the concept should be really, I think it should be. I think it'd be a great thing for the park.
Well?
I'm going to excuse myself in a minute, Mr. May.
Sure.
Take myself out of this. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we have three of us left, which is a quorum. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the conceptual drawing. And hopefully, this company, corporation, whatever goes forward and brings us, you know, and goes to building and goes to wherever they have to go to get everything done. And let's start seeing some plans and start seeing some elevations and everything else that goes along with it. Second.
We have motion second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to know why we'd excuse or something.
Well, if a councilperson or any one of us has a, from what I was told, are predisposed to vote against it because of their personal feelings or something like that, they should be excused. I'm not a lawyer, so I can't tell you if that's the exact thing.
Yeah.
It's kind of like.
Well, if they're predisposed to vote against it, why don't they vote against it? I mean, show a little, whatever, moxie.
This is not to condemn anybody. This is all about a couple, you know, men who have an idea. And I think that the way that you have massaged this is exemplary. I really do. You keep trying to make it work. You actually want to help the manor house people. The manor house people will not be able to afford a parking lot you're putting on any form. You're using the Colonel's original driveway. There's a lot of things there as a way to blend two different worlds together. So for that, I'm going to ask for the call, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Foes? Good luck. Keep at it, keep trying. Good luck. All right. Next is the proposed zoning for the property located at 10277 Valley View Road. Hi, how you doing? Yeah. Let's see if we can help you out. We have some comments from the, Andrea, please.
I have reviewed the applicant's interest to rezone portions of their property into two different zoning districts. The intent is to rezone 18.2 acres to the RSC Senior Housing District. Senior Housing District and 7.28 acres into the R2 multi-family residence district. The 18.2 acres is located on the north side of the property, backing up to Pringle's Lane, while the 7.2 acres is located in the southeast corner of the site near Melody Lane. The property is located at 10277 Valley View Road and is approximately 53 acres in size. The subject site is currently zoned R1 Residence District. I have reviewed a conceptual rezoning plan dated July 17, 2013, in connection with those requests. The rezoning plan is very conceptual, but in general, the concept of changing zoning on this property seems logical given the existing land use patterns and zoning immediately to the western subject property. Unfortunately, I do not know enough about the request to provide a recommendation at this time. For instance, it appears that the proposed 7.2 acre R2 parcel is showing what appears to be a baseball diner, yet no parking is being provided. Conceptually, the use is acceptable, but I do not know why it is being created in the, in the proposed location. I also don't know why this portion of the property is being requested as R2 zoning. The senior housing portion of the property is being proposed along the north end of the property, abutting from Rose Lane, which are larger lots zoned R1. In my opinion, the land is large enough to divide the zoning into different districts, but how the property is divided into different uses remains a primary use, in my opinion. Again, a rezoning of the subject property to some other higher-density zoning district does make sense. does make sense, given the land uses and density patterns to the west. However, the location of the senior housing and the higher-density R two housing is something that needs more exploration. Please note, amendments to the zoning map do require public hearing and compliance with the amendment process outlined in the Planning and Zoning Code.
All right, um, Dennis, Nick, anything on this?
No, nothing for me.
All right, what we're faced with here is, uh, we have talked to these men before, they're trying to follow the rules, uh, and yet still get it on the November ballot. Um, did you guys happen to get the calendar from Josephine?
Yes.
You did? In other words, what you would have to do or what time?
She was extraordinarily helpful.
Yes, she already says, "Well, this is a, um, an issue today," because I, uh, I got in touch with Brian through an email, but I didn't get an answer, because, um, the meeting today, we have to come out with, um, the planning commission approves the kinda like concept of this going to R two, and then you will go to council Thursday, all right? And then after that, you will have a public hearing, but in the meantime, you'll, you'll make the deadline so it can go on the ballot. That's my understanding, so I'm stating all this for record purposes.
Were you able to get a hold of Board of Elections folks to at least find out exactly when you, what your deadline was to get it on the ballot?
Yeah.
What did Board of Elections say?
In terms of, there, there, there were two different avenues to this. One is collecting signatures. Deadline for that is August seventh.
Okay.
Uh, the deadline, for, for this purpose, we're act, we actually have a little bit of a cushion, but not much.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um-
Thank you, 'cause I was trying to-
So, with that thought in mind, um, I would like to caution the planning commissioners, since we don't have written approval from the planner, you guys will be needing to come back, all right? But what we need to do tonight is decide if the concept is a good concept to go there. Um, as the planner states, he sees no problems, uh, you're actually, um, are almost an entity of your own in that the church property is so big. Um, or the buts adjacent property, there are homes in that area, the homes that will be built, and the people that will be living in those homes in this area will be kinda similar in demographics, you know, so I don't see a, a great problem there. But if we were to give you approval today, I think you're gonna need to come back. The planner needs more information related to certain specific items like, for instance, the parking lot.
Well, the, the- But I, I think one of the things, his, his comments, what we submitted were the existing conditions, which is the plane's, site plan, so the baseball field is west area.
Ah.
So what we're trying to do is paint with a broad brush and saying, we want, we, we think it makes the most sense for R two to be up front and RSC to be in the back, and the existing road leads up to the back and to leave the road where it is. We're not proposing a baseball field back out and being part of R two district.
Dennis, does that kinda blend in with what's there? Now, my understanding, the R two will be like the R two going behind the Girl Scouts, where they'll have a building, or assisted living, is that correct?
No, the R two would be multifamily, but, um, more like attached single homes, more like cluster homes up front. So, and, and that's part of the due diligence that we have to, we have to get into, is we know that the zoning for R two fits the demographic in the market for what should go out there. The actual amount of units and how they're attached, they would be more just attached.
Yes, and now I seem to remember, but it's real easy, because we've already had several senior citizen complexes proposed to us, and are blending together a little bit.
In fact, we had done, yeah, we had done this prior, but this was the conceptual idea that we'd have looked at before. Again, this would have to change. This is, this is previous.
Yes, see that?
Where we had senior housing on top and then more like cluster housing at the base. And, so this plan is old and kind of out, but, 'cause we really need to relook at it based on the R two district and the senior citizen district.
This is the new, that's the old, okay. Gotcha.
So, we, we have-
This is here, senior.
Yes.
And this section is here, and then this is-
All maintained as R one current church property.
It's still R one current church property.
Right.
This is the RSC, this is the R two, or-
RSC.
Yeah, I've got this on screen.
Okay.
I'm looking at it from my point of view.
Yeah, actually, Bill lives back there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, he's looking at it from his window.
From his house.
All right, now, um, so what's on the floor tonight is the planning commission, um, giving approval, so, um, the zoning can be changed there to accommodate what you want to accomplish. Um, you will still go before council this week. Um, we've talked in the past, you're looking for ways to, uh, bring in people, take care of people, I think that's very commendable. Usually, you, uh, would think anything related to a church and working with gatherings such as this, where they want people to come close to them, is, is for the people's betterment, so, um, I'm just trying to make that point clear, so that it's not misinterpreted in any minute, that you will be coming back, okay? We need more information. But tonight, we have to make that decision. Can they go forward with the rezoning?
Did I, I think that the, the key point from, from our side is that we completely understand that. What, what we wanna do is be able to get these to be, get the zoning changed, and then really develop the plans of, from a site standpoint, everything that can go on the site. And it might even be that that goes in phases, but whatever we're gonna do comes back individually for full approval.
And, and you need to remember, it could be denied, and then what good is the zoning?
Absolutely.
Members of the commission, I think it's important to understand, and I think you do, but just to clarify, you know, we are here for a rezoning, which is conceptual in nature. Obviously, the nitty-gritty detail will be back before you for site plan review, you know, when we're talking about parking and drives and density and aesthetics, those, those types of issues. Um, and certainly, you know, we'll comply, and we're looking forward to working with the city on those issues. Uh, but this is step one. In order to get to the site plan review, we need to have the zoning in place that's appropriate, uh, for this property, which is unique with its topography, as you're well aware. Um, and so that's why we're here before you. We don't have all the other information, 'cause we need to pass step one first, but we are willing to report with the city.
All right, 'cause you will have to, you, you could end up with R two zoning in that area, but unless what you're gonna do is approved by this commission, so we all understand one another.
Yes.
Kevin?
So what are the, what are your thoughts on the two different areas? It's different, it's different than this plan, I know, and I know you, you're making preliminary, but what replan put in should be great?
To make it as simple as possible, just for, for this purpose. We have the land by Valleyview Road, which is really the prime real estate, the easiest real estate to develop, and that's the, the R two zoning. That will be multifamily market rate, at least we're looking at, possibly senior, but we wanted to open it up to a broader population, depending on the market. Behind that, we're talking about a, uh, multifamily senior, fifty-five and older, single-building community, and then also assisted living in that area. So it's basically a senior complex up top with a, a market rate component towards Valleyview Road.
And I think one of the things for, for in the back, whether it's, uh, senior living in one and assisted living in the other, or two senior living buildings that are serving slightly different markets, those are all things that we really need to investigate. But again, it comes back to the, gotta get past step one to know that it's worth investigating that aspect.
The market is extra, the market is extraordinarily strong with, with our research, um, to, for, basically, any direction, which is why we really wanna make sure that we keep our drive, don't figure out the right courses.
I'll tell you what, um, Valleyview Road has not been addressed for a long time. One of the things I think we have to consider is, is some improvements you may have to make to that road, so that we have, um, decent assad lanes, uh, we have room for anybody coming in and out of the place, because I have no idea, I don't think anybody could give us an idea of our projected traffic patterns, but if there ever was such a person , he's sitting right there. What do you think, Kevin?
Yeah, I think they probably would be, you know, we can bring in some detailed plans, some, some kind of studies and thoughts on, on, on traffic and driveway location, and possibly trying to align with what was across the street, what's up on the street, is that-
Preserve.
Preserve. Maybe try and align with that, or see how the interaction between those, um, yeah, so it's-
Where you come in and out of the preserve, you know, they might even have to look at something there like traffic light, you think?
I, I kinda hope not, but, but it's, it's possible. And I think all of that, to get this to sit in with the community, so it fits from all aspects, including that, is, is what I'm willing to do. That's, that's kinda the goal, is to make this feel that, to feel like it's supposed to be an operating function.
Well, faith fellowship has never had any problems at all with the city, and I think you, uh, you've been an asset to our city, you keep your place looking good. Um, and I kinda foresee that whatever you would put there would be kept looking good because of your past reputation. Um, Dennis, am I correct in assuming that, that you've never had any problems with faith fellowship or-
Right, that's correct.
All right, so here we are, we're faced with a decision tonight strictly so that they can move forward to get the zoning, and actually, that puts a pressure on them to, you know, we've got this zoning, now we gotta make things that are gonna work the way the planning commission and the city wants it. So, um, I think I can't say it any clearer than that. We've gone over and over, this is about the zoning component tonight. With that thought in mind, any other questions or comments, or do I have a motion?
Do we do them separate, Mr. Mayor? Or each, each one?
Well, the, the R two and the RSC are both gonna have to go on the ballot.
Right, so we have to, we have to mention them separately?
If you would like it that way, Rita will do it that way.
No, I was just wondering.
Well, the, we're dealing with the zoning issues, so if you wanna group it, they're zoning issues, but I think you're gonna need to list what the zoning issues are. You don't wanna go to-
Right.
-to general industrial, so you have a very good point. Um, you wanna make the two motions, gentlemen?
Sure, we can go, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, the, wow, now we'll sit down.
Go by size.
The, okay.
The proposed RSC residential senior citizen district, the L.
The eighteen point two acre, uh, section is, uh, from, will be, could be, what, changed from R one?
Yes.
Or the conceptual idea of changing from R one to, uh, RSC be accepted? Sound right?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you guys start here.
Now, that's true.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more to go.
And then after R two is D two.
No, that's the wrong move. All right, uh, next, you wanna go, or Bill gives us the description of the property, because you're so good at it.
I know, he is so good at it.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion that the, uh, seven point two acre, smaller of the two sections, uh, the zoning be conceptually changed from, uh, R one to R two.
Proposed. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Now, Thursday night, seven thirty, okay? I, uh, I think you need to discuss with Josephine how you wanna work that in. Uh, you might, uh, remember, this is televised on Thursday night, of course, this is, it actually, because of the state, but, uh, you might want to bring some kind of a presentation, like a drawing on a board, that you could put on an easel and show people what it's all about, so the council will better understand, the public will better understand. It'd be your man.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you very much.
I hope it all works out. All right, do we have anything else to discuss, or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Do you wait and get-
No motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.